Both county council and CEO to say, okay, well, how do we respond to these comments? And there are some significant policy issues that need to be addressed. And rather than us write up something and then to hear, oh, no, we don't want to do that, we're going to reverse that order. Let's hear what you board as the policymakers want to do, and then we will craft the ordinance based on that direction. This is similar to what we've done previously on different controversial topics. I remember having a long workshop similar to this with the cannabis ordinance several years ago. So been there and done that, and so this will be a good opportunity to get feedback from the board so that when we come back with the draft ordinance, it'll be at least in the general direction of what you want us to prepare as well. You know, there's likely to be, you know, tweaks and changes that will need to be made through the process, but we want to have the general direction given to us today. So I've sort of gone over, you know, the issues. There's a list of questions I'd like to go through, but I would suggest if there's general questions that you want to ask us now, then I would suggest turn it over to the public, get their input before we then come back and discuss each of these issues. And there may be other issues that we haven't thought of that you want to bring up. We have a suggestion on that. So do you have any questions of us at this point?
Would the board like to jump in?
I think listening and hearing what they have to say first, and then, you know, I can throw my crowbar inside the spokes after that.
Okay.
Yeah. Brett, you think I should wait then as well?
I think that's a good idea to hear from the public.
Thank you. Sorry, so we'll go to public comment.
Could I just make the general public comment here? I want to hear your statements.
One moment, one moment. If you could come up to the podium first, thank you. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. Janet Romanowski with Murphy's Vacation Homes. A general comment is, if you guys have kind of talked about questions and have things out here, I think most of us are working off kind of the draft ordinance from before, and I don't know what you've come up with to say, oh, you're right, that makes no sense. So it's a little hard for us to put in comments on something that we're going to find out later. You guys have already decided it made no sense. So my suggestion would be to kind of go the opposite way. I mean, that makes more sense to me to know what you guys have already changed or decided against, because it sounds like you've got some comments there.
I think we should go ahead and get the rest of the public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board, and then if we need to, we'll go back to the public.
Okay. My name's Kelly Steller. I'm with Cedar Creek Realty. I own offices in Arnold and in Murphy's. I've been in the vacation rental business for 25 years, right here in Calaveras County, specifically up in Arnold. We do have some serious concerns about this proposal's practicality and its potential unintended consequences to our community. I understand the desire for oversight for the STRs, but we need to be realistic about what our county can effectively manage. The county is already facing significant workforce challenges. Adding a complex permitting process would place an unreasonable burden on an already stretched staff. The sheer volume of STRs in our county would make timely permit processing nearly impossible. Delays would frustrate property owners and potentially cost our county valuable tourism revenue. We're looking at creating a bottleneck that could harm both property owners and our local economy. Perhaps most concerning is the impact on our Arnold cabin community. Many of those cabins, while perfectly safe and having hosted visitors for years, might not meet the strict technical requirements of the proposed permit system, simply due to their age and original construction date. This creates an untenable situation where responsible property owners might be forced to either stop renting entirely or continue operating outside the system, which would dramatically affect the TOT revenue. The county stands to lose significant TOT revenue, funds that are relied for essential services. Let me emphasize the broader economic stakes we're dealing with. Our community's lifeblood is tourism. It's not just a part of our economy, it is our economy. Many of our residents have built their livelihoods around the STR market, from property management to cleaning services to maintenance work. If this permitting system forces STR owners to close their doors, the ripple effects would be devastating. Our local businesses, restaurants, shops, service providers, all depend heavily on the steady stream of visitors that STRs bring to our area. Bear Valley Ski Resort, a cornerstone of our tourist economy, relies on having adequate lodging options for its guests. If we reduce our STR inventory through overly restrictive permitting, we're not just affecting individual property owners, we are threatening the very foundation of our local economy. There are several specific aspects of STR management that have been raised: guest limits, noise concerns, and local contact requirements. The county has already acknowledged that occupancy numbers haven't been a significant issue in our community. The current self-reporting maximum through our online TOT registration system has proven adequate. There's no need to complicate a system that is working. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Jesse. That's going to, he will address noise and whatnot.
Thank you, Jesse.
Good morning, Board. Jesse Gibbs. I own Century 21 CR Properties, which also has offices in Arnold, Murphy's, and Angels Camp. So some of the other concerns we've had regarding noise and neighborhood disturbances, while we appreciate the intent behind implementing fines for repeat offenders, we need to consider the practical challenges of enforcement. Monitoring and documenting these complaints would require additional resources our county just doesn't have. Instead of creating an unwidely enforcement system, we should focus on strengthening our existing ordinances that apply equally to all properties, whether they are rentals or not. As for the requirement for a local contact person, we agree that having someone within the county who can quickly address issues makes sense. However, the proposed method of mandatory neighbor notification is problematic. Forcing owners to distribute contact information to all neighboring properties could create an unnecessary tension and potentially lead to harassment situations. We should trust property owners to manage their relationships with their neighbors as they see fit. Many responsible owners already share their contact information with neighbors they trust. This organic approach maintains community harmony better than any mandatory system could. Adding the local contact information to the online registration project should suffice for this. Another concern, and one that we just want to make sure is addressed, because there's critical misconception about housing availability, some have suggested that short-term rentals would, or restricting short-term rentals, would somehow increase our full-time rental housing stock. This fundamentally misunderstands the nature of our mountain community real estate market. The reality is that most properties in our Upper Highway 4 area are second homes, significant investments that their owners have specifically chosen for occasional personal use and short-term rentals. These aren't properties that would naturally convert to long-term rentals. The economics simply don't work. Mortgages, and we know how fire insurance has gone up, payments on these high-value properties far exceed what our market could support for a long-term rental. In regards to zoning, many of our residential areas, especially up in Arnold, already are self-regulated through HOA policies. Numerous associations have already made their own determinations about short-term rentals, either restricting or prohibiting them entirely. This demonstrates that our community already has effective mechanisms in place for managing rental activities at the neighborhood level. We should continue to respect the authority of HOAs to make these decisions for their specific communities, rather than imposing one size fits all for a county. And last, we'll have Jamie.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm just getting a little cold, but I'm Jamie here on El Poros. I'm an agent for the last 20 years in Arnold and a lifelong Arnold resident, and I just kind of wanted to wrap up with a couple of last thoughts here. I think it's important that we look at the historical perspective. Short-term rentals have been a fundamental part of our community for over half a century. While we experienced an unprecedented surge during the COVID years, as did many vacation destinations, our rental market has naturally regulated itself back to normal seasonal patterns with minimal community impact. The reality is simple. Our current registration system with the TOT board works. It provides the necessary oversight while maintaining the flexibility our community needs. We don't need to fix what isn't broken, we need to preserve what is working. Our community has successfully managed vacation rentals for over 50 years. Let's not dismantle decades of successful community practice with unnecessary regulation. The simple proven solution is right in front of us: maintain our current registration systems, preserve our community's character, and continue the traditions that have served us well for generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. So do we have any, oh, Janet.
Thank you. I'm Janet Romanowski. My husband and I have Murphy's Vacation Homes. When we first came to Murphy's 25 years ago, the choice was to stay at the Murphy's Hotel. And I don't know if any of you guys have stayed in, I think it's room 12, right above the bar, where you hear all the good lines of people heading out at 2 o'clock in the morning. It's not, it wasn't the best in terms of lodging. We couldn't bring our dog. It was just not great lodging. But that made us decide that we wanted to buy in this community, so that's what we did. So we've been in this community for a long time, excuse me, a long time. About nine years ago, we made a decision that we would take the property and convert part of it into a vacation rental. Now, we went through all the processes that we had to do through the planning department, all the things that they wanted to see. In that nine years, we've since added three other properties, so four properties. We have never had a complaint about noise, we've never been called in for a problem from a neighbor. All the neighbors know us, we're very responsible. My concern is, you have an ordinance here that is going to get the people that are kind of the bad ones, the ones that cause the problems, the ones that park all the boats and vehicles, or whatever this is talking about. You're going to get those in the net, but you're also going to get people that really are good landlords, good vacation property managers, that take a responsibility in this. I know for myself, you know, we take pride in ours. We are not slum lords. We take very good care of our guests. One of the things when I look through this is, what she talks about is going back to square one and having people go back through the process. I think what we're going to find, and I don't know the areas outside of Murphy's, but for example, in downtown Murphy's, you have older homes, they were done with small bedrooms, oftentimes no closet. You also have parking issues. You have very small lots, some that don't have any parking. So we've all kind of made do, and you park as best you can. I will tell you, we have parking for our guests, so that's not an issue. I'm not up here to try to say we shouldn't do that. But I'll take a look at something you said on the original draft was, on one hand, you say there will only be one vehicle per bedroom, and then you talk about a capacity. So for example, if you say it's a four-bedroom and you're going to park four vehicles, then when I have my book group that comes back every year, it's four women, they don't mind sleeping in the same bed, they're not on couches, they all want to drive separate cars, they're coming from different parts of the state. But you're telling us here, we can only have four vehicles, and there's a parking capacity. That's going to be a problem, and I think also just the whole thing about saying that people have to park off-street, drive in downtown Murphy's and look at some of the rentals, there's no way they can comply. And when you look at that, so what we're going to do is, we're going to lose rentals. Oftentimes, those little cottages that have no parking, that might have the small bedrooms, are some of the most affordable vacation rentals.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the board, and I'd like to jump in first and say that the majority of short-term rentals are in my district. And in reading the staff report, I stopped and asked myself, what's the objective here? Why did I want to, why did I agree to then say we need to look at a short-term rental ordinance? And the primary reason for me was safety, and that's not addressed in the staff report. I feel very strongly that the Upper Highway 4 corridor evacuation is number one in the back of my head. And when CEO Hitchcock and I were at the RC RC meeting, we spoke with the woman who gave a presentation from Truckee, and one of the smartest things I heard her say was that visitors leave on a warning. And I think that for me, this registration certificate, however it comes together, I think our visitors need to know that they need to leave on a warning so that our constituents can then leave on a mandatory, and we're staggering it. I also think it's very important that we know that each and every, and these are all the good actors in the room, I mean, all of the evacuation information, the smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, I do think that there should be a self-registration process where all of that is signed off by the landlord. I do believe that with STRs, with Airbnb, the best policemen out there are the guests, because they report directly on Airbnb how their stay was, what was good, what was bad. I do think that there are those things like garbage collection and making sure that people do park responsibly and not in the middle of the road, and if their driveway isn't plowed, that is an issue. But we have locals that do it, and we also have second homeowners that do that as well. It don't, I go back to that phrase, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, and that's where I think Jamie was saying that as well. I do think it's important that we do have a system in place, that we continue to monitor, that we continue to build on, and just make sure that we have nothing but good actors. I know that you've also talked about who should be responsible or who should be getting that call. I think the supervisor of that district should be getting the call, because I can mitigate a lot of things by dealing directly with the people involved. I know, for example, Kelly ends up dealing with properties that she doesn't represent, because people call her thinking that that's one of their properties, and she deals with it. It don't, I mean, I want to back up what everybody said. This is a huge, huge issue for us, because ultimately, it is our, it's our bread and butter, and I don't want to do anything or impose anything that's going to create any kind of friction that would stop people. I know that Kelly was telling me, I think when we met Peter and CEO Hitchcock, that she'd already lost a sale because somebody thought that we were going to start regulating STRs, and that's not my intention at all. And I hope that the rest of the board follows suit. And I also want to reiterate that even if we were to regulate STRs, there's no way that workforce housing is going to be able to afford these properties at this time. I do feel the noise ordinance is important. Of course, it always comes back to how do you, you know, enforce these? But I do think that they're a fine for people, and I do think that we need to look after our locals. We do have a lot of locals that have their own STRs, and I think of all the locals that I know that run their own STRs or run them through a company, I've never heard anything. It's all the owners that live out of the county that don't, that aren't answering their phone at 2 o'clock in the morning when their guests are making noise. So again, I guess, I'd like to make this as simple as possible, but I just, for my taste, I just want to make sure that everybody has the right evacuation information and that the properties have the right smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, parking, and garbage collection. And for the most part, with these companies, they make sure that that happens. It's just to put it in writing so that the bad actors we can take action against. That's my two cents. If I may, sir?
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Chair.
I agree when it comes to workforce housing and stuff, just, you know, homes that are selling for $800,000 up that corridor are going to be, you know, mortgages, $4,000 to $5,000 a month, if not more, with the fare plan included. So that's just not viable for someone that's in that area, with the majority of being on the Highway 4 corridor. And I will add that with the other industry I work in, when it comes to grants and stuff, with people that actually live there, the median household income is lower than in my district. So we're able to get grants for infrastructure up there, but not down in Rancho Calaveras per se, which really surprised me, you know, if you look at the two areas. That said, we don't, you know, with more hotels coming in, we still don't have enough for people when they come in the area. So to stand it, I mean, they started putting Airbnbs down in Rancho Calaveras in areas just so people could visit families and stuff. Looking at different ways, I don't want to shut any business down that's going right now with new rules after the fact. I wouldn't want to put them in a bad spot if they're a good actor. I completely agree. You know, if anything, I think that there needs, I agree with you, Martin. I can shorten up my whole thing, is I agree with you when it comes to safety, but to try to limit the industry or put people out of business at this time would not be beneficial to our community as a whole. But we, there's something that you didn't bring up is, the thought on parking, I think, comes from, I apologize, Amanda, but from the Lake Tolok area, because they'll have people completely congest the street to where people that live there can't get home. And it's navigating how we deal with that so that, you know, people can get home, much less if there is a fire, they can get out of the area so that cars aren't blocking their way. So I think that's another consideration. Thank you.
The only district currently that actually has a permitting process, I guess, for me, I have been happy with the way that county staff and the realtors and the homeowners and copper have utilized dealing with the issues and the problem. I will disagree, I don't necessarily want those phone calls, it has been helpful to have that property manager, and then dealing with the property manager when things do elevate, and there have been a handful in copper, and then working with the respective staff. But for the most part, I have found that when those phone calls come in, they're able to work on it locally, and I think that's the biggest thing, is just reinforcing the common sense. And some individuals are not having that common sense, and it's, I've liked the existing system, but I understand and I know that pasting somebody's phone number all over, there can be some, there will possibly be some form of harassment. So how we comb that in, I am open to supporting those ideas, but I don't necessarily want to be getting hit with those phone calls. I would, I have liked that middle person, however that works out. With the parking, I think the parking came into play because of trailers, really, with the boat launch. But I have seen when Supervisor Callaway was here, we discussed it, you know, there's just, some neighborhoods are still neighborhood that people live in and they come home from work, and there's 10 cars outside and they can't even park in front of their house. And so how that looks like with the parking, while I recognize in my district, it does have to do with the trailers, with the boat launch, I think we need to help, and that's been one of my number-one complaints that I've received, is how do you work with the parking situations in some of these places? And I get it, you know, in your district, there is no parking, but that doesn't mean that they shouldn't have the opportunity find what that solution is. I have talked to some of your individuals in the public. I think in the initial start of this, there was definitely misinformation with this was going to solve our workforce housing. That was not my intent. I don't think that was the objective of where we were going with this. It was more, we've got complaints, we don't know how to hurdle them, and right now, the only process was in District 4, in the copper area, there was a process of how to deal with that and deal with the bad actors. And I think it opened up another set of why we're here today. I, so I know it won't solve the workforce housing, I know that's not part of this, and that is not my intent. And I do agree with the other two supervisors. I don't know, and we've talked at length about it, I don't think that, I don't know what it looks like, whether it's permitting, registration, I think we need to make it as easy as we can with change. No one likes change. It's going to be a bump in the road to however this looks like, but adding unnecessary paperwork that didn't need to be needed, I am open to what those look like. Is it a self-reporting versus a permit? Is it, you know, some other avenue? I am bound and open to those recommendations and supporting that process. But just know if I do say permitting, I'm going to have to change my word, I'm just meaning how do we recognize everyone? And then lastly, just, I do thank all of you for coming and being part of this. I know it has caused some of you some blood pressure going up and down, but thank you for your patience with working with us as individuals and understanding what this can look like. I think we can build something that's successful, that helps everybody going forward. And one thing I told staff, I just don't like the fact that we've got one area of the county and we do something, and then the rest of the county, there's nothing. And so what does that look like? How do we, how do we put those sideboards and expand it outside of my district alone? Because it is confusing. I think we've had numerous issues in front of this board where we've had to decide things because there wasn't an avenue to deal with those situations, and we need to, need to address them. And then the HOAs, I hear, I've got nine HOAs I deal with down in copper. They have expressed making sure that they do not want to see this go away. They do understand, and I'm hoping the rest of the HOAs in the counties understand this, if they want something more restrictive and they want to deal with it differently, then they need to deal with that in the CCNRs. That is not our responsibility. This is just a basic, simple, hopefully simple, but overview, and what they decide within their boards and their HOAs, it is their responsibility to do. And so I think that has been a confusion on some HOAs as well, where they want certain specific things, and that is not, that's not my goal, is to address that. If they want to address that, they need to push that back and be responsible within their own community to deal with that. So anyways, I'm done.
Actually, Amanda, could I add on to that? Because ultimately, whatever the CCNRs are, insert whatever we have out there.
Correct.
So they can be more restrictive.
And that's what I'm saying, they have asked, some comments I've gotten from HOAs is, well, can you add this and that? It's like, no, that's not the intent of this. You want it more restrictive.
You do it.
You do it over the counties.
I'd also like to point out, too, that Lake Mont HOA has actually said in the past to me that it's the second homeowners that are actually making more noise and more trouble too. So the onus is not just on short-term rentals. You can't have 5,000 to 7,000 people come in for a concert and not have a place for them to stay. I mean, this is a huge part, as we say, of our economy, but I also, just one last time, want to point out that the last time that we did an evacuation on Highway 4, it took an hour and a half for people to leave. And after we've seen all the video of Palisades and what have you, we just know how important it is. And so again, I just want to reiterate safety. Do we have, sorry, Supervisor Toppin, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, you, both you and Amanda have the gist of all of this. Highway 4 corridor is basically where most of all the short-term rentals are. There are a few in District 5 now, and there are a few in mine, but I don't get any complaints. I haven't had any complaints really on any short-term rentals and any loud noises or too many people there or anything like that. But I think it's very, it's going to be difficult to craft something, giving all this information, just because of the differences in the areas. With Lake Tolok area, and it's close to the valley where people come up, and being on the board at the length of time that I have, I think most of the complaints that we've heard and people have come and public comments or whatever, has come from the Lake Tolok area, not so much from Arnold area and up that way. There have been some, and most of those were the driveways going up to some of the areas in Arnold where the homes are, and short-term rental people were using the wrong driveways or blocking the driveways or whatever, because they go up and they're not supposed to. But that's an issue I don't think we can solve here with an ordinance. But I think it's going to be very difficult, and, but I think it can be done. I think we can do what we can. There needs to be something in place in case we do have explosions that come up that we can fall back on. I'm with Amanda, the phone calls, I'm open to everybody could call me and my I'm open to everybody could call me in my district, whatever. But I think there should be a route that it needs to go before it comes to the board or comes to the supervisor. Much like a lot of other things, the general public goes through the areas. And when they don't get satisfaction to them, then they contact the supervisor.
Just to add to that real quick, because I agree, I agree with you both. My immediate thought, Martin, was something to the sense of, it's like when we, we get certain code compliance issues in it, it's forwarded to us as a supervisor, an email. And then, you know, at that point, it's up to the supervisor whether they're gonna talk to anybody or not. Thank you.
Supervisor Randall.
So in District Two, it looks a little different. And I, I don't necessarily see this as a one-size-fits-all. I think that what works for Arnold and Murphy's, where most of our tourism is in Lake Tullock, needs to be looked at differently than say Railroad Flat or West Point. We don't have a lot of tourism up there. We do have some STBRs. I know of one that's working great. It's the owners live on the same property, they regulate it themselves. It looks wonderful. To that effect, I was curious as why we're saying no ADUs. To me, that seems like almost a perfect opportunity in rural areas such as District Two, because you have the owners there to manage their own rental. Evacuation issues is also a very big deal up there. I visited a community just a couple of weeks ago that's one way in, one way out of a very, you know, windy dirt road. And they have a new rental up there short-term, and it's caused a lot of problems in that neighborhood. So I think that we need to look at this on a community basis. And, you know, I've gotten a ton of calls and emails with people on both sides. There's some that are doing it great. I'd like to reach out to some of the realtors in my district and see about help such as you folks give in your areas. I think that could be a good outlet. And as a supervisor, I would be happy to also work with owners. I don't want to put more work on our county. I don't want owners to feel threatened by having to post their numbers. But I think there has to be something in place to kind of regulate this. Sorry, one other, you know, one of my constituents that did reach out to me was concerned about the noise and what that puts on the sheriff's department with having to go out with their little noise odometer and how effective or ineffective that really is.
Because it is traction on the west side of the county. I've heard, we know of people that ski at Kirkwood and stay on the west side of the county. Which is great. So we'll hand it, oh, sorry.
Just a legal question for Sarah. Because we've been through this before with other ordinances. How is it making it, how, it's generally a lot more work and not very simple to make a ordinance that's, for the county, that's different for different areas. It applies differently.
Yes, it would, it could be complicated. Which is not to say that it's not doable in some way, but yes, it would be complicated. And if I may too, just on the ADU question, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that state law, there are prohibitions in state law for utilizing ADUs as short-term rentals because of the housing crisis and looking for more long-term housing. So I think, I assume that's the reason why they were carved out here.
I would add too, when we, we streamlined the ADU process in Calveras County, we stated therefore for that type of thing. So at the same time, it sort of conflicts with what we stated why we were streamlining the ADU process here.
Yeah, I think.
Not that it's illegal or for our reasons.
Right. I think our hands are tied to some extent, and that's the reason why that was drafted.
That's, that's correct. State law prohibited. When we updated our ADU ordinance in 2017, we included that prohibition in it because it was required by the state.
So we'll hand it back to you.
Okay, well, that's some good general direction. I sort of get a sense of where you want to go with it. So I guess the first, if we, maybe if you just turn to page 222 on your binder, there's a list of questions, some options. We can sort of go through those, discuss them. There's some recommendations that we have made. And if there's anything else in there we want to talk about?
It says packet page.
Item on the agenda.
Okay, well.
Discuss some, some like.
It's 232.
The issue.
But what's in, you can turn to my.
I think the issue is that there's two different, for the board, if you're accessing through yours. So it is in fact, page 222 of the public packet. It's, it's the first page of the staff report for this item.
232, okay. So the first question is, do we want a permit process or registration process? I think I've heard that answer pretty clearly. We don't want to go through, like the, you know, permit process. I don't think the staff can handle it anyway. You know, on second thought, after looking at the first draft, you know, trying to process 700 permits, hearken back to the ordinance days of the cannabis ordinance and don't need to go through that again. So we already have a registration process for the TOT tax. One of the things that we'll need to sort of figure out is, do we want to register with the planning department? Or do you want to have the registration continue through the treasurer tax collector? I don't think it really matters. And I think that it's something that probably the tax collector and the planning director can sort of work out without having, unless you as a body have a really strong feeling one way or the other about that.
May I just make a suggestion, Peter? Regardless, they'll have to go to the tax collector because of the TOT taxes and everything. And with so many different businesses in the Calveras County, having to go all over the county and try to figure out what they're doing, let's try and keep it with one place. The tax collector, if that's okay by the tax collector.
Check with her. I think, LaHua, we were, this was brought up at the legislature planning yesterday. And she's willing to take that on.
Excellent, excellent. So, so in that case, I think it's, it's best to keep it one place and keep it simp, more simpler and streamlined as opposed to other processes in the county, like a business license.
One page. So the second question I had then is, where would we want to allow the short-term rentals? All residential zones? Do we want to restrict it from ag zones or multifamily? I think that our recommendation would be that any zone that allows a single-family dwelling, that that would be where you could do this. I do have a concern about conversion of apartments. That is one of the few places we do have affordable housing, that those be converted to essentially a motel type of unit. I think there's also some building code issues that we need to address on that. So our recommendation would be that single-family homes, these can be used for vacation rentals, but not multifamily dwellings.
And I hear what you're saying, but we also have like condo units that could, just so that, because there's condos that aren't necessarily in the affordable housing or townhouse style in, in certain instances, that I just want to be open to other buildings that could be viewed as a multi-resident and not restrict those. Mr. Oliver, am I? I saw him stand up.
They're all our chief building official. The, the building code has a significant distinction between single-family dwelling and a hotel. And multifamily housing and, and converting that into a hotel is a significant leap as well. And the defining factor is whether it's transient lodging. And with a single-family dwelling, typically if you have permanent lodging, you have one family, you have one level of hazard. You go to transient lodging and you have one home that can house people transiently. So that's the public, but in maybe one family increments. As soon as you move a condominium with four or more dwelling units into the realm of transient lodging, now you have a lot of the public rotating through a building. And the level of potential hazard goes up dramatically. We have to classify any structure based on what it most closely resembles in the code. So when you make the leap from multifamily, as soon as you make a transient lodging, we have to classify it as a hotel, whereas with a house, it's a gray area. When you make a transient lodging, there's, there's, it's, it's only one family. One of them's rotating, one of them's not. There's, there's layers of code that we would have to sift out to, which is why so many jurisdictions have made their own rules and said, this is the gray area. So here's, here's where it's safe and here's where it's not. So I, I would be very cautious about entertaining any multifamily housing becoming transient lodging for, for any reason.
Could I ask you, how do, how do B and Bs fit into this whole equation?
There's specific language in a bed, for bed and breakfast in the residential code. And you're limited to the amount of units that can, or amount of sleeping units within that building. And the owner has to live there. So there's a certain level of direct supervision and management, so, which reduces that risk. So that, that is clear direction in the building code for that. My, my two pennies.
I completely hear what you're saying and it makes sense. But in an instance of a townhouse where it's two units or certain condos, now condominium areas generally, there's a lot of units. But a condo can be a lot like a townhouse in the sense of how it's arranged. And you could have four condos in an area owned by four different people. And many times, they're used as such. So I agree when it gets over a certain member in an area, definitely. But when it's like up to four units in an area and it's not necessarily an apartment building or apartments, because there's some small apartments that are four units. I, I just have a hard time restricting those, because some of those are built in areas, not necessarily a lot in Calveras, but there are certain areas where the intention is for turnover. So, you know, also, we got, I mean transient. And so I, it's, that's where I'm having a hard time restricting it. I completely agree when we get a large apartment building and it becomes transient, we, we don't want that. That's, that's such a high flow of vehicles and then we have a road impact mitigation matter that we have to think of along with safety and everything else.
I'm, I'm just recommending caution and a lot more discussion and definitely bringing in our local fire chiefs into this. Because if multiple occupancies all switching or the potential to have transient and permanent in the same building, it, it raises questions that we really need to explore.
I, I agree. At volume, I agree a hundred percent, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's. It is, it is a thing.
It is. And we definitely have multiple units, townhomes in our district, in my district. Thank you.
So is there a consensus or direction from the board on how you want us to handle zoning and where, where short-term rentals would be allowed or prohibited?
I don't see prohibitive. I mean, like you brought up ag, and that would defeat the purpose of ag tourism. So, and so, I mean, come up with some ideas on the multi-units so we can look at them later from my perspective. I'm not sure what other supervisors have in mind.
No, I'd be interested to look.
I'm fairly open on zoning when it comes to them, to it. I can't think of anything right offhand other than, you know, government, public land. Probably shouldn't be used for Airbnb. It's the only one I'm suggesting, no.
We could bring in an extra income here.
I would just ask that we are specific with our ag uses as far as around ag tourism opposed to just a random, you know, STBR on a big piece of land. Just kind of watch that and be specific on how we write it in.
For ag, because Doug and I have had these conversations over the last couple of years. As long as we don't get into a realm where we've got to now deal with a whole like hip camp scenario. I really want to avoid that. But I'm open to, I mean, with like Ben said, we've got ag tourism, we're trying to promote that, so I'm, I'm fine with it.
All right, thank you. So the next question we have then is, just going down my list, is should there be a number or a limit on the number of guests? That's a, that's a tricky one. Particularly as we will be moving more towards a, a registration process. We have no intention of inspecting and seeing how many guests are out there. So it's, you know, it's going to be dependent on the unique characteristics of the site. Do they have enough parking to accommodate eight vehicles? Is there enough bedroom space? And if someone wants to put in a loft full of bunk beds, you know, I guess that's up to the owner. But as long as the occupancy doesn't create a safety hazard, either by, you know, not enough exiting from the building or egress from the side or, or parking that's blocking a road, I don't personally see how the number of people there really makes a difference in the county. Except for, for the spillover effect of more people, more noise. You know, more people, more vehicles, those kinds of things.
Peter, can I ask you, because we, we share friendship with a, a couple that live next door to a house that was built that accommodates 14 people. To me, that's a small hotel. How do you, I mean, how do you limit the number of people? I mean, in, in trucking, they do two people per bedroom plus two. And they don't allow you lots, and they don't allow you play spaces.
And that's the standard we have in Tullock right now.
Right. And I don't know how we would ever even enforce that anyway. I mean, I guess if the noise ordinance, you know, people showed up, then you could actually say how many people were staying in the house. But, I mean, a house built to accommodate 14 seems like a, a B and B to me.
Yeah. Good question. I don't have an answer for you.
To answer that question, I think it's up to the people that own it or rent it out or the realtors to take that responsibility on. I, I think, and Doug can correct me on this. This is open to the public. Once it's open to the public, there's, there's laws, state laws and other restrictions on the number of people that are allowed in the size of a room or size of a home. Because it is public now. It's just not your family and family members coming to visit or whatever. So it's up to us to protect the public on somebody saying, Doug, you correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct, sir. That's why I said that, you know, moving from permanent to transient lodging raises a lot of gray area issues. And one of them is occupancy of, of, not just the occupancy category of the building, but the number of people that can be in each space based on its use. The amount of people we expect to be in a kitchen per square foot versus a, a bedroom is different. In commercial, we have to look at, is this gonna be for dining, assembly, you know, actually workshop? They all have different number of people per square foot, you know? And so it can, but to be fair, when you apply the design of a residence, there isn't a lot of people you can fit. I think it's like a hundred, hundred square foot per person or something. You're not gonna get a huge occupancy out of a home. But on the other side, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere about 23, 24 years ago, there was a court case, and I want to pique the interest of at least one attorney in it, where it was, there was a code compliance case where they had a huge. where it was, there was a code compliance case where they had a huge family in this building and the code compliance officer was enforcing the occupancy limits. And then he went to court and the judge determined, you can't tell a person how many people they can have in their family. Once again, the gray area, though, we're going from a residence where it's permanent to transient. So we're, if, if we're going to blend this into the code, we need to come up with something that, that fits in that gray area because this, this short-term vacation rental scenario is, is not a clear answer on either side. I mean, the, the most restrictive you could go is say, as soon as it's transient, it's a hotel. You know, and to your point, that would be pretty restrictive.
I'd maybe jump in and possibly recommend, since we've decided to pursue the registration process and not the permitting process, you know, really getting a handle on occupancy and enforcing occupancy will be problematic, you know, since we're going with more of an informal process and a streamlined process. So setting an exact cap when we don't have a permit process or a, we're not intending to do a site inspection prior to them operating, it, it might be problematic enforcing it since we've gone with a lesser permitting process.
I have a question. I don't know if you'll be able to answer. Could you said something about site inspection or if you'll be able to answer? So Fire Marshal has been doing inspections. So how is then not going to play into this factor? Are we going, is that still going to be a requirement of the jurisdiction in charge? Are we going to worry about that? Because that would be the only reason I would even, and I agree. I don't know how you're going to enforce it unless somebody calls in and says that there's something going on. How is, how does the jurisdiction in charge going to, do, do they come into play or not with that?
I actually, can I jump in? I've had that conversation with Chief Johnson and he's flat out said that he, there's no way possible for him to actually do this, especially with the number of short-term rentals in our area.
Okay. And I just tie that to safety with fire, with, you know, just closing that loop. Okay. I mean, I agree. I don't know how you're going to enforce it. My only concern would be if, if there were the violation, how do we, how are we going to deal? So say, you know.
Can I answer that?
We get that phone call and it's been repeat, 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 but we don't have anything in the, but how do we navigate even the complete process?
So, so the laws in effect that currently are enforceable. State law, under state housing law, there are criteria for what is considered substandard housing. And housing in state housing law extends to not just single-family dwellings and apartments, but hotels, motels, any transient lodging. If it's built like a house or built like someone's going to stay the night, state housing law applies. And the criteria, and, and hopefully to alleviate some of the concerns of the good actors in the room, the criteria is not modern anything. It is simply, is what was built and how it is used consistent with a safe environment? So is the electrical safe? Is the plumbing safe? Is the, the structure safe? Do you have proper egress? And there's a component of that as it relates to fire departments. Anything that the fire department determines is a hazard can be considered substandard housing. Now, fire departments, we have nine fire districts. They're all going to have a little different level of, of sensitivity over this based on their population and their, and their topography. They're going to make the decisions in their districts when they see a hazard out of, based on the fire code and their own ordinances. As code compliance, we're the hub for enforcement on, on violations of ordinance. If the fire district cannot affect a change, they often send those complaints to us. So if they get a complaint and they go out, they see a problem, it can't be arrested, by their powers, our code enforcement can open a substandard housing case and pursue it that way. The challenge is having the teeth to follow it up. Fines alone are a challenge. But under state housing law, if you have continuing violations that aren't remediated, you can follow the process of abatement through closing the doors or seeking a judgment. Or there's a lot of options that we can tease out as we move forward here. But we do have effective codes. We just have to have an effective, effective communication enforcement platform across every district that manages this, including the sheriff's office. We can work with them very closely over sound issues if we have an effective sound ordinance to coordinate so that they find the issue and we enforce. So there's, there's a lot of options here that we can, we can, let's say cobble together to make an effective ordinance for you.
Okay. Thank you, Doug, for that explanation. So I guess, I mean, common sense. And if the common sense, I mean, is it going to, we're going to keep seeing that common sense not be used? Then yeah, I think we're going to have to about that. But I can't see most individuals that are using this violating it. I mean, I think it's one in, like you said, there's, there's few. And if it, if it changes, then I mean, this is, it can come back for a policy decision, in my opinion. So I, I'm open to using common sense on this one.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it, is it safe to say that, that the overall direction we're getting is that if, if you can't enforce it, don't write the ordinance? But if you can enforce it, make sure that you have the resources necessary and enforce what is written? Is that what I'm?
I don't think, I said, you said, don't write the ordinance. I say, write the ordinance, but we need to be wary of what we can enforce and can't enforce as we move forward.
Right.
Right.
I guess I overshot the budget.
We're having a hard time, I think we all have our time. Because right now we're on occupancy, right? And that's number. And let's just look at Lake Tahoe and South Lake Tahoe when they try to limit it to eight people per, 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 per unit. I mean, that doesn't, how did they enforce it? I don't know, because I used to live up there and I didn't even have a rental unit. During New Year's, I had 50 people show up to my house to stay there during the time, you know? Especially Fourth of July, when you have millions of people. I think the issue is partially parking in some areas, you know? So that's something that needs to be addressed. Although Murphy's is kind of an impossibility. I don't know how we would address that. One car in front of a house sometimes is too many. You know? It, uh, but, and also, the times when people, some young person rents the place and all of a sudden there's a party at the house and the Airbnb person doesn't, didn't know that. That wasn't the intent that was put forward. But all of a sudden they're dealing with their house getting wrecked and the neighbors being pissed off. I think these are both some of the major issues that we're having, trying to deal with the occupancy. I think that the parties issue needs to be dealt with by the Airbnb person when it comes to the deposit that's taken. And that moment, that crosses the line. We have a noise issue that we can use to put the complaint in and then they violate the rules of the Airbnb. Those people are going to be fine. So it's going to maybe temper the amount of people who are willing to lose, like let's say, $800 or $1,000 on a deposit, you know, in some instances. The parking issue is the one I'm having a hard time. That's going to be a blanket thing across the county. And I don't think occupancy is the way to solve it. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I, I have a question for Sarah. Since this discussion is going down the path it's going. Currently in front of us, it says on the occupancy limits proposed, two persons per bedroom plus two additional with a maximum of up to 12 people. With, with that in the ordinance, whether the people follow it or not, whatever, does that not protect the county? If something happens, if somebody has 50 people and, and somebody gets hurt or fires starts and people, whatever, something in place protecting legally the county?
Um, I, I mean, it may to some extent, but if we're not enforcing, then maybe not. I mean, I think it's, um, I think I'm struggling with, I mean, yes, I suppose it could, it could in theory be somewhat protective of the county. Yes.
Thank you. I mean, we can't enforce every law or every ordinance that we have. We do the best we can to enforce them. And most of the time is when we get complaints that we have to go out and enforce. And I think with this would be the same way. You get complaints from the next door neighbor that there's 50 people over there and they've been there all weekend and, or whatever. Then we could, we have something in place we can go out and enforce. But to go around all the time and have somebody specifically go check all the Airbnbs and all short-term rentals and whatever, I don't think that's possible.
Right.
But I'm just looking at the liability of the county with, with something not in place, that somebody could come back and sue and, and bring the county into that lawsuit based on they had no structure.
Um, I mean, people can always do try that, of course. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think to the extent, I mean, I think it just depends on how it's done. I think if we, if we ask people to self-report, you know, what the occupancy is going to be and, you know, we, we certainly are entitled to rely on that to, at least to some extent, yes. Which I know is one of the, I mean, I think the self-reporting was kind of the thought process, right? Is when they register, they would.
When they read.
And then we import it that way. So.
I'm just concerned about any liability that we may have by doing something.
Or by not doing something.
Not doing something.
I mean, I think, I think that if we're not actually affirmatively permitting, right? I mean, I think in, in my mind, there's sort of a distinction. If we're, if we're telling people, we are going to issue you a permit, there's some expectation at that point that we are kind of doing our due diligence and checking things out. If we're just telling people, hey, if you, if you engage in this, you have to register and pay TOT. I mean, I think that's a little bit different. So I mean, I think to a large extent, it depends on what this is going to end up looking like. I, you know, I, I don't think the county really takes on liability if we're just telling people, hey, if you engage in this, you have to register and pay TOT. But if we are doing something more robust than that, then yes, we would want to have something like that in there for sure.
Thank you.
Just one more point on the 12 that I would like to make. I, I've rented a place that was very large and I had only family up there. Of course, we did party a little bit as a family. But, uh, uh, that was ver, that was very nice. And we had more than 12 people in the family up there for, for Christmas, for Christmas, you know? Up in your area. You know, it was very nice. And 12, 12 wouldn't have been enough for me to have all my family there.
Ms. Galino.
Hi, Kathy Galino again. Quick question. Is the direction going to be then to have a registration process and a business license process? Was that clarified?
Well, I think those are two separate, I mean, generally speaking, if you are operating a business in the county of Calveras that meets the definition of a business, you have to get a business license. That's just existing local law.
Okay.
And then I think what they're talking about now is, is whether to separately, right, for these particular types of establishment businesses, whatever you want to call them, whether they're going to be reg, just registering versus, which is what they're already doing, right? Already registering with the treasure tax collector.
Right.
Versus there being some sort of additional permitting process.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear because I had a chance to speak with the tax collector. She can't be here today, she's on an appointment. But, so that was one of the things she wanted to make sure that, you know, it's somehow distinguished very clearly. Thanks.
Thank you.
Peter, I have one question about the, one other question about the occupancy. How, because in all discussions, I didn't want to drastically change copper, knowing that there would be some changes. But how would that impact that? Because isn't there a cap on that one?
Yes. Currently, the cap that I think you'd brought up was two per bedroom with a maximum of 12, plus two additional, maximum of 12. You know, that's really maybe a more fundamental question is, do we leave copper as it is under the current permit processing that we do have there? Or do you want to eliminate or modify chapter 2020 and have it consistent throughout the whole county?
Well, there, there are things in, in the current, such as docking boats and what have you, that are really specific to obviously to, they need to be in there for, like Tulok.
I'm also really that chapter as is, other than maybe reconsidering. I really don't want to have permitting, and that's been my sticking point the whole point, the whole time, is permitting in one area and registration for the rest of the county. So how can we, is there a way to allow them to do the registration but still have these certain caveats, like the docking, the twill, the boat parking, things like that in that chapter? But allow them to self-register? Because then they're still going to have to do the business license, they're still going to have to do the permit, while then again, once the rest of the county is only doing registration.
Well, that's, that's the status quo, that's the case now, right? Everyone, so everyone has to register with the treasure tax collector now so that we're capturing TOT. And the Tulok folks are, are getting a permit. So I mean, the status quo would be to leave that as is. In answer to your question, I mean, just as a practical matter, without a permit, I think it would be difficult to enforce the things like the docks and those, those existing.
Yeah, and that's where my sticking point becomes. That's where I have my, at least for me, I don't think, I get it, there are nuances. There's going to be nuances in Murphy's with parking, like we discussed, there's going to be nuances. But then how do we, I don't want staff or confusion to the public, you know? Okay, they did this whole thing and then we finally, how long is it going to take for staff to flag it that the address is in copper rather, and not in the Eagle? You know, even though they may relate to themselves in copper. Like it's, I, I just, if there's a way to figure that out, I am open. I know we won't get it settled today, but it just, I, we've gone round and round and round and round.
I, I hear what you're saying. Just on respectfully disagree. I don't need the permitting process in my, my area.
I know, that's what I just said.
No, no, they say the whole county, you were talking about the whole county. At some point, maybe I misheard you.
You did. What I'm saying is I don't want.
So you want to keep Tulok as is and you don't need the permit for the rest of the county?
No. What I'm asking is how do we, how do we move copper into the registration process so they're not the only one having the poor permit?
Oh, well, you can't have all those rules. She let you know, you can't have all those rules.
I know, I know that. And so I'm saying that she's going to probably be a continuation of a conversation that we're going to have to have and that we've been going round and round about it. And I agree, I don't, but how is that okay for my district to have a permit? Otherwise, no, I'm not going to support the short-term run, runaway ordinance. I mean, that's been the issue I've had the whole time. It, I'm not going to have, it's not applicable. It, there's issues and it, and it's not going to make sense.
Well, we could certainly modify chapter 2020 to change it from a permit process to a registration process. There's some issues we'd have to look at as to how we can enforce, say, the occupancy rates that are, you know, right now required in chapter 2020. The other option is, as we originally proposed, is to eliminate 2020 altogether. We could write rules that, you know, if the property, you know, fronts a body of water, you know, these standards apply. So those would pretty much only apply in, at, at Tulok. But there could be some other place where there's a body of water, that there's a dock or something. I can't think of any yet, but, you know, that.
And so I would be open, and that's what I want to, if there is a way to do that, I am open to it. But I don't want to have, if we keep, I don't want to have two separate processes to register. And like I said earlier, registered permitting, whatever it is, I just want it to be the same. I respect everybody else on this board. Otherwise, then it just, for me, it just defeats the process. Why do my constituents have to go through an act of, a product crap?
I think I.
And I understand the history of the lake. I get the history of it.
Okay, and that's, since that's been in place and we put that in place, it's gone down. And that one.
For Tulok.
For Tulok. And the amount of boaters out there, and, and the sheriff's office having to go out there because the boats were running into each other. And so this, this ordinance was put in place back then, and it's quieted down. I'm not saying if you repeal it, or, I, I'm maybe in favor of what Peter was saying. If it's on the water, then, then you have to go through the permit. That way, it doesn't focus on one area, your specific area. But that area was focused on for a purpose.
Right.
And it resolved the issue. We don't have that problem anymore of what we were having, um, back then, 20 years ago, 15 years.
If that's not to do the double work on the permitting process down there, then that's fine. But I'm just, I think it just, it just, it's going to be confusing. It, it just, I already am dealing with it down there, where they don't understand, you know, why they have to do these things, and the rest of the county does. And so how do I answer to consistent or to individuals with that? And I get it, it's in the ordinance, it's been in, I, I am very aware of what happened down there. I have grown up in that area. I am not naive to the situations that have happened down there. I know why that happened. But if we're going, if, can we evolve it to make it not confusing? Because that's one of the biggest things I hear, is I don't understand this. And it makes it convoluted a little bit, but.
Sometime, and, and I hear what you're saying, and it is an extra step for that area. I do feel for safety needs, and the amount of boats and everything that were down there. I know you understand, Amanda, that it is needed, and there isn't a clear path through just doing it one way with a registration to get the type of enforcement needed for that area. Um, and every time I don't want to do an extra step of work, I say, I don't understand also. So a lot of those people, they do understand why. They just, they just don't want to, so they're giving you a call and asking you to make the change. And that's not always the case. Some, some are like, why is the rest of the county not have to do this? Well, it's because you bought it in Tulok. That's why. That's what the answer is. And, uh, so I think, I think that, I think that for enforcement reasons and to keep those safety measures in that area, we do need the dual. We have to have the registration for the tax collection purposes, and we have to have the ordinance for our best tool for enforcement in that scenario. And that's my perspective.
Peter, how many questions do you have left?
Um, three.
Three? Is everybody, everybody all right? Continue to finish the three questions?
Yeah, we'll go on to the application process. Babe, Steve Conover.
Oh, no, I think we already discussed that. I think that we've said, no, we don't want to permit application, we want to do registration. Next question is regarding the noise ordinance, and should we update the noise ordinance concurrently with this? Our recommendation is yes, we should. We've had a conversation with the sheriff's department. They want it updated because it's difficult for them to enforce. Without enforceable noise ordinance, we will have a number of complaints that we just can't, can't deal with. So our recommendation is we update that concurrently.
Yes. Yes for me.
Yes.
Sounds like a yes.
Now we're flying through them.
Okay. Um, the contact person for complaints, I think is going to be probably one of the stickiest issues that we have to address.
I actually would like to retract what I said earlier, and I would like to go with this.
I'm on the call.
People, people call me anyway, so I know I'll be able to do it anyway. But I think that I would like to listen to my co-supervisors and go that direction.
I was going to pull your phone number.
Tattoo it on my head.
So in, in, in 2020, in Lake Tulok area, there is a contact person. The public is notified of who that is, not directly, but indirectly. They say, well, who's the contact person? This one. That's part of the application packet. We have that. That needs to be updated, you know, if it changes, so that the county can contact someone if we get complaints. And if, you know, if it's a weekend and, you know, the one's at the county, then the public can also say, hey, there's, you know, something going on next door, you need to do something about it. There's, you know, a couple of different recommendations we had in here. I think that, um, I'm sort of at a loss of what's going to be the best way to do that. I understand the concerns about having, you know, the owner of the property, their phone number out there, getting harassed by someone next door that just doesn't like them. But I think we need to have some, someone, some entity responsible to deal with immediate complaints. Most of these are going to happen on the weekend, so compliance isn't around. And, yeah, and I don't know what's the best course of action. We've really struggled with trying to figure out, how do we do this efficiently without tipping the scale too far one way or the other, that either the, the public, the neighbors, don't know who to contact when there's a problem, or the operator is harassed by, you know, a neighbor who just is rude. Any suggestions you have? We're all ears.
I mean, the issue is that most of the, as you said, most of the calls would be coming in on the weekend, and usually it's at one or two o'clock in the morning. So I don't know who fields those calls. Sheriff's Office.
Well.
Yeah, I was going to say, yes.
Point of contact.
So I guess really the, we can.
Definitely willing to consider point of contact.
Well, I think, I mean, regardless of whether somebody is registering or getting a permit, it sounds like it's going to be registering. I mean, they're going to have to provide some contact information, right, who the point person is. So then I think the real question is, how is that disseminated? Like, is it just, you know, if somebody calls the county and says, hey, what's the contact for this property, you know, we wait on the next business day or whenever, you know, that information could be given to them, versus, is it something that the owner or operator is required to give out, kind of affirmatively to neighbors within a certain, so I mean, I think that's, we're going to have a contact person and their contact information. The question is how that gets provided to potential complainants, I think.
Yes.
As a practical matter.
Thank you for clarifying that, Sarah.
So I guess that's it, then?
Well, do you have, you know, we can write it any way. We can say that, you know, you shall provide adjacent neighbors or everyone's in 200 feet, contact, you know, number. Or it could be based on, you know, as Sarah suggested, someone called, and you messaged the county over the weekend. Monday, we get back to them and say, you know, I'm sorry we couldn't get back to you, you know, but next time it happens, here's you call.
I don't think that works. I don't think that's fair to the neighbors on a Friday or a Saturday.
Well, that's.
How does the sheriff, like, is the sheriff willing to be fielding all these on Friday nights and Saturdays?
Well, they generally end up doing that. And, and not, not that we're throwing it in their lap, but that's when, or.
Did I say you? I apologize.
It's nice that, like, there's property managers, right, that will deal with it, but it's also probably burdensome. But it seems there has to be a way to contact somebody in the moment, not Monday.
I do think that the good actors, at least in my district, have neighbors, that there's already that connection there. Again, it just goes back to the few bad actors that you can't get a hold of to, to correct the issue. And then the bad actors obviously give the good actors a bad name as well, so it just snowballs.
Can I say something? You could require to have.
If you could come to the podium. Thank you.
You could require to have somebody in the county, because a lot of these independents are from the Bay Area.
Right.
Just require them to have a local person that's the contact person.
Within 30 minutes away or.
Exactly. With, yeah, rather if they're 20 minutes away or whatever, but they need to be living in Calaveras County.
That's a fairly, and that is a very, a fairly common provision when I was looking at other jurisdictions ordinances. That, that's pretty typical. I think it still goes to the question of like, how, how is that information about who that person, who that contact person is, how does that get disseminated to?
During your registration. You need to put down that contact number.
Yeah, absolutely.
In Calaveras County during your registration.
Right. But then I think, how do the neighbors find out who that person is?
Are we being proactive or reactive?
Right, as a practical matter.
Thank you, Kelly. Janet, no, I think, I think we're.
I'm out of the county. Can I speak to that?
I, I don't, I don't think so. Sorry. Shouldn't have. Thank you, though. Peter.
I just have one more question. In, in these scenarios that we're talking about, because we do have our good actors that, you know, generally don't rent to the wrong person, but, you know, things happen. Is there a complaint system, like, that we could put together, like a three strikes, you're out scenario? No?
Well, if we had a permit process, the permit could be revoked.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But simply registration.
But can't we revoke the business license?
That would require overhaul of our, like, I mean, theoretically, yes, but, um, that's not currently part of our business license ordinance.
We'd have to revoke property management's business license. See what I'm saying? Because everybody works under my business license. If I have one house that.
Thank you, Kelly. Yeah, thank you.
I don't hear a consensus here at all. It's just that you have the same concerns that we have about how do we do this. I don't know, there's a simple answer. We could probably do some further research and see what other communities have done. It sounds like so the fallback position is, well, we'll have the information. The good players will work with their neighbors to say, hey, if there's any issue, contact me or contact this person. Um, you know, for the rare occasion when it's not, we'll get that information for the next time. That's probably, probably as best we can do.
Perfect. That's right with everybody?
Yeah, I guess that, that'll be fine. If, if it starts getting out of hand, we can always bring back and come up with a different way to do it.
Typically, the complaints are going to be based on noise, and the sheriff will go out. And if we can update the noise ordinance, that may solve the bulk of the problems. Okay, and then, last question. Do we want to have the registrations renewed on an annual basis, or is it a one-time registration?
Maybe somebody in the, in the audience can answer this, but my concern would be, can we, if there's a change in the contact, I know the realtor group, that is not going to change because it's going to stay to that property management, but, um, Joe Smith down the street might have his buddy who lives in the neighborhood, but then maybe his buddy leaves. How do we know that that has changed? So I guess, um, I'm, I'm, I'm open to the one every year if it's self-registering, just to ensure that contacts have maintained and nothing's changed. But I don't want to make it too difficult.
With a business license, you have to renew the business license on an annual basis.
Okay.
So I think, you know, this is relatively simple. We make sure you have updated information.
And safety equipment, fire extinguishers, et cetera, need to be updated, what have you. So they're signing off on that every year.
Yeah.
I think and every year is preferable to me.
So can I ask a question?
Come on up to the podium.
So if it's an annual, so I, I take on properties all the time, all throughout the whole year. Is it the date that they come on? Or is it January 1st? I mean, there's got to be some kind of set rule, or I'm going to be renewing everybody every other day.
Right.
You know, and, and having people go out, having the, you know, fire department go out to one house one day, one house another day. See what I'm saying? So it has to be some kind of a.
Structure.
Structure, yeah.
It should be like a period of five, a window. I'm sorry.
Right. And as far as when people leave, you have to unregis, unregister them with the TOT anyways.
Supervisor Stopper.
I, I don't know if things changed after COVID, because that was like our black swan event. But prior to the COVID, I was aware that, it was amazing how often Airbnb's changed hands.
How often do they change hands?
No, it was amazing how often they did, you know.
Would go from property management to property management?
No, owners, homeowners of homes.
Oh.
And them selling their Airbnb, someone else picking it up. And it was kind of, some of them were kind of like weird swaps a lot, a lot of the times, from what I was understanding. So they changed hands fairly often in the past. Do they still change hands in ownership?
Yes, we definitely, yeah, because it's a second home market up there.
Right.
You know, I mean, basically, it's usually every five years. You know, somebody will come up and buy, then their kids grow up, they're in sports, whatever it might be, they sell. So, yeah, there, there is a constant turnover.
Two, three to five years is what I understood.
It's, it's about five, usually five to seven.
Average.
Yeah, is an average.
I'm sure that, you know, the, you know, the registration process, you know, when there's a change in owner, a new registration has to happen immediately. But then it would be, there'd be a window. It wouldn't make sense to, you know, have to track, you know, 700 different dates. You know, just like with the business license, I think there's a window. You have to do it within a certain timeframe. We could work that out.
Like, like, let's say, every five years, like, 2005 or 2025, 2030, I'm just throwing my idea out.
Well, I would, no, I was thinking more if it's annual, that, you know, between, you know, you have to, you know, re-register prior to March 15th for, you know, it's gone a number out of the, out of the air. Just as the business license has to be renewed. When you open a new business, you got to do it then. And then, within that month, month and a half period, you have to renew it annually. And so it could all be done at one time, for those who manage. Now, I guess that raises a question. Do, if I owned a piece of property and I contracted with a real estate company to manage it for me, do I need a business license? I'm the owner of that property. I'm the owner of that business. I just contract with a manager to operate, to manage it. I think that's, that's a question that, that the tax collector will need. We need to know whether or not each individual property owner has to have a business license.
The consensus from our meeting yesterday was that, that it would be under the business.
Because you're making money if.
I send them a 1099.
Service for them, but.
I send them a 1099 at the end of the year.
You, you 1099 the owners?
Yeah, every one of them. And I also collect the TOT, or Airbnb collects the TOT. And I pay that quarterly.
Still, I don't know, this is a good question about whether they need to have the business licenses or not.
But they work under my business license.
They are in a business, regardless, they hired you to run it, but they're still, that's a good question.
It's a, it's a partnership.
1099, it's, that's legitimate. So they're still, they're still paying taxes on revenue, but the business is taking care of.
Go ahead.
A business can lease any property and run a business on it?
Um, I, I would recommend, I actually think that there's some other issues with our business license ordinance, which is very old, that probably could need to get cleaned up. So I would recommend that we will, we staff, we'll take a look at our business license ordinance as it's currently drafted and how it, how it might answer that question, and then we can make a recommendation to the board if we think that it should be cleaned up.
That ends our list of questions. Are there any other further direction that you want to give us before we go back and re-attack this baby?
Could, could you just give me the timeline that you think now, how this would?
Passive attention.
I think, you know, we could get a, a redrafted ordinance, and then, you know, back to the commission. I would think we could probably schedule for the commission within one month. I do want to reach out, we do want to have a discussion. I want to re-reach out to the sheriff's office. We've had some very good discussions with them on the noise ordinance and enforcement. And we really want to make sure that they are, how do I say this, that they bless this before it goes forward. So it's my plan to give them a pre-review of this new direction product. So I, I would say a month before we're back to the planning commission, I would say probably two to three months before we're back to you for another discussion and possible consideration.
Well, no further questions. Thank you very much. This is an informational item. Thank you so much. Peter, thank you for all your work on this, for, for the, taking all the public comments and, and, and then obviously handing over to Brad, but thank you.
Welcome.
And we'll move on now to supervisor announcements.
In compliance with government code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Can we start with Supervisor Stopper?
Thank you, sir. I am.
Thank you, sir. I'm, I'd like to bring up to the board that, talking with Mr. Oliver, and we've discussed this in the past, alternative building practices and methods within, you know, within the building code, it gives us the opportunity, as long as it addresses the safety issues, some, for some alternative building practices and methods. We would like to, Mr. Oliver, could you explain this to me, for, for me, or to them for me, as you're more versed in the code and even the first part of the code where it gives the official?
Wait, see if I can summarize it. There's a lot to this, and it's gonna, it's gonna take a little, if, if your board decides to go this direction, it's gonna take a lot of discussion. But in discussing some hardships in relation to growing housing, part of it is a proliferation of, of building codes adopted at the state level, and we're required to adopt triannually. I don't know. I'll just summarize that it is a three-year process. Most, if not all of the state agencies that do write codes in relation to building have to go through the Building Standards Commission. And there is a component of state law and state housing law that specifically addresses that if there's anything that is considered unreasonable, an individual agency or individual corporation or government agency may challenge that portion of state law or of the, the codes. They challenge that to a local appeals board, and if it is found to be unreasonable, it is removed from the code as it applies to this jurisdiction. Now, that's how it is worded, and it was, just for some history, that's been around on the books since about 1961. That's when HCD was basically on its own, and the Building Standards Commission didn't regulate the codes for every agency. Well, at this point, there's like eight agencies that have to go through the Building Standards Commission now. So there's quite a bit here that can be looked at to see if it's unreasonable, in my opinion. Like I said, it's gonna take a little time to suss out if your board is interested. And by, and, and just, just to cover the flow, typically, when an ordinance, when we adopt the codes through ordinance, we're adopting what the state has already said, this is the code. Once you adopt that, that is the minimum standard, and typically it's the minimum standard statewide. We have the ability, once we adopt that code, to adopt more restrictive standards. Okay, that is the flow. And then within that, there is a paragraph of, of, of the code that allows the building official to authorize alternative means and methods, but that is only in relation to something that is equal to or better than what's in the code. So, so once you adopt that code, everything thereon either is the same or more restrictive. What this piece of law that's been sitting there says, for your local jurisdiction, you're taking the code out before it's in practice and saying it's unreasonable in this. So, so it's not in the backside that I'm always in. It's ahead of that. And, and if the board, if the appeals board finds it unreasonable, you file that with HCD at the state and say, we've taken it out for this jurisdiction. Like I said, I haven't seen anybody practice this. I've mentioned it several years now, in multiple jurisdictions. I've said, if you, if you don't think this is fair in the jurisdiction, here's the method. Nobody's done it, but we have a housing crisis statewide. We have a housing crisis here. So if your board wishes to dig deeper, now's the time to
Point being is, I'd like to bring it for the board for discussion, and, and see how much appetite there is for how far we're willing to go. Not that we want to thumb our nose at the state building code at all, but there's building codes such as the sprinkler systems in, in certain ways inside residential homes that don't, that don't work, don't work properly in cer, in certain scenarios. I'm using that example. I could be wrong, Doug. Does, I can be wrong. But, but some of those could be found to be, to be not practiced, and a lot of jurisdictions are complaining about them. But more so, I'm also into the alternative building practices and methods that are equal to also, and how, how far we're willing to go with that also. So this is, this is, this is, the building codes is substantial cost to building homes at all anymore, and, and it goes through the roof. At the same time, there's, they're in there for a reason because of safety, and we need to be open-minded about that and not go down a route that's gonna put anybody in jeopardy. So I'm just, want to see what, bring it to the board if they want to hear it, and see how far they're willing to go with that sort of type of scenario.
Supervisor?
Well, I understand what Supervisor Stoppard's talking about and what he's saying. I, I wouldn't be opposed to it if the rest of the board is, wants to do that. I don't know how much work that's gonna place on the building department and Doug to bring something forward like that, but the rest of the board is interested.
I'm not opposed. If that
Supervisor Andal?
Any way we can make it more affordable for our constituents, if there's a way, please do. Look into it.
Yes, please. Thank you, Doug.
I will turn an informational item for your board in the coming months.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Stoppard.
Yeah. Don't want to put too much on you at once, Doug. Hurry up.
Very well.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
No pressure.
You know, you know what? Off the top of my head, just thank you for the opportunity to work with our chair as vice chair. This is the second time I've been vice chair on the board. I do appreciate working with you all, e, even, even when I misunderstand what some people are saying. I, I do respect your, your position. So I'm very excited. I think that, you know, we've been very good at, or been blessed with having a board that's worked together for years. It looks like we're coming together with another one that's functional. And just as long as you all can keep me reined in, we'll be doing okay. So thank you. I just, it's a pleasure to work with you all. Thank you.
Supervisor Stoppard?
With that, no, I don't have anything other than maybe Supervisor Follendorf talk about the Central Sierra Child Support Agency meeting. Excuse me. Autumn can talk about our meeting yesterday.
Supervisor Follendorf?
Last night, Gaye and I attended LAFGO. And John has agreed for one more year, and we're gonna go through that process to hopefully recruit. Thank you, Stacy, for being there last night, and thank you to the CEO for being there as well. And this Thursday, along with the chairman, but this does not include any board member, any public member, so what Kathy said earlier during staff report, we will be going down to Sacramento to comment at the CPUC regarding the funding for round one for Calaveras County. Kathy and IT and Barbara at ICIC have been really doing a lot of work in getting not just letters of support from legislative elected, but community members from the school district to the hospital district. I mean, I know I'm missing a list, there's a whole list. And on top of those letters, videos, so those will be getting compiled and sent to the CPUC as well for comment. The other thing, I guess this is more of a question or to staff, and then I guess also to board. It's been a while, and I know Brett is still getting in the swing of things, but are we going to skew greenhouse gas this year? Are we coming directly to the board? I, I just want to get my head with that timeframe.
How about hardwood? Oh, good.
So I believe the planning commission had passed that on to the board, so I will request that Brett bring it forward to the board in the next 30 days.
I just wanted to make sure that, I wanted to know what the sequence was, so.
Okay.
And then lastly, yesterday, was that yesterday already?
Yes.
Having back-to-back meetings and that. And I'll let the chairman say more, but I did attend the strategic planning meeting, and we did talk about hardwood. So it's coming. It's coming. Yeah.
Boom.
Yeah.
Supervisor Fungshol?
Supervisor, I like it. Yes, yesterday with Supervisor Tofanelli, I attended the Central Sierra Child Support Agency Board. Great to learn about that group that serves Alpine, Amador, Calaveras, and Tuolumne. Good example of all of our collaborations. On January 24th, I attended the Upper McCallum River Watershed Authority Meeting. Learned about that group, all of their fuel reduction plans, watersheds, forest health and resiliency. Really appreciate their work. And lots of meetings for me so far, getting settled on various committees and organizations. It's been fun.
Supervisor, thank you. I'd like to report that on the 15th, I'd like to thank administration and facilities for demoing the house in Murphy's. That was a huge, huge issue, and it could have ended up in a disaster, and thank you so much for taking care of it so quickly. On the 16th, Supervisor Andal and I met with Senator Alvarado Gil just for an informational. On the 22nd, I attended the BPAC Caltrans with Supervisor Follendorf. On the 24th, the RC, RC Zoom update with Barbara. On the 24th, we had a town hall meeting regarding the meadow that we would like to see made into a natural preserve at Rosetti's Restaurant in Avery. And then yesterday, I attended with Supervisor Follendorf the strategic planning session. And I want to make sure the board was aware that in March, the beginning of March, we're gonna be having the Sierra Nevada Conservancy coming and doing their meeting in Murphy's. So that's a big deal for us, and it'll be fantastic. And they'll be going over all the work that they've done in Calaveras and, and hopefully work going forward. So that's it. So with that, at, time is at 12:39, close the meeting. Thank you all.